Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of May 4, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to have the pleasure of having Pastor Larry Black of Dominion Worship Center offer the invocation. Pastor Black, I just so love your heart for our community, so thank you for the many years of service. And then, following the invocation, we had the pleasure of having the Virtual Enterprise Business Plan Team, Visionaries their name, from Bakersfield High School to lead us in the pledge. This team traveled to New York City and captured nationally second place in the entire nation. They spent an entire school year creating a business plan, and Visionary provides prescription eyewear by utilizing eco-friendly materials. So congratulations, but let's stand now for the invocation. And their coach, I will introduce them.
First off, I want to thank you for the invitation. Appreciate it. Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for the leaders that serve our communities here. Lord, we thank you for Mayor Go. Lord, we pray for the health and the strength for each one of them and their families. Lord, as they assemble together, I pray for the unity of the Spirit, even if there are differences of opinions. I pray that they'll continue to work together for the benefit and the well-being of our city and all who call Bakersfield home. Lord, you said if you, we lack wisdom, that you would give it. So, Lord, we would ask that you would grant supernatural wisdom and guidance concerning the decisions to be made tonight and in the future. Lord, give insights to the problems we face in Bakersfield and grant divine solutions. And we thank you for your hand is on our city. And, Lord, we pray that Bakersfield would be blessed and prospered. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. You may be seated. And team, I'm going to come down. The rest of, oh, I'm sorry. Major, we jumped ahead. Come on. Lead us in the pledge, please. Whoever is going to.
Please stand. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom, eternal and eternal.
And now, you may be seated. It's not every day that we get second place nationally, but Coach Riker Salano has done this just a few times. It's your 10th time taking people to Nationals. Coming up here, team, come up here. Coach, feel free to say whatever you would like.
Not much to say other than I'm incredibly proud of the hard work that these students have put in, countless hours, beginning back in August for this moment. I'm incredibly proud of them. So, thank you so much for considering us and thanking us. Thank you.
It's my honor to present this to you and to the team for all of your accomplishments and team members. The mayor's medal. Might have to flip it around. Want to introduce them by name, Coach? While I do this?
So, we have Sophia Rizolmi, Mason Gifford, L. Dwyer, our CEO, and Emma Adams. We also have Ethan Taft, who could not be here as well.
Can we take a photo? What do you think?
Thank you.
He's only as good as their coach, right?
Presentations, item 4A. A proclamation to Jeremy Tobias, CEO and James Berger Outreach and Advocacy Coordinator of the Community Action Partnership of Kern County, declaring May 2022 as National Community Action Month in Bakersfield.
You need to study? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you so much for being here. Well, CAP-K, what do we say about CAP-K? You know, you're amazing, serving the underserved, serving those who are food insecure, just so many areas. You're venturing, you're just getting larger and larger in the scope of what you do. And May 2022 has been designated as National Community Action Month, which celebrates the thousand-plus community action agencies. But I think we could be, we can take great pride that we have the best in the nation here with CAP-K. They're working to connect people, they bring about life-changing services, pathways to prosperity, working with people who really have very little. But thank you so much to CEO Jeremy Tobias, and now it's my honor to be able to issue this proclamation. Whereas Community Action Partnership of Kern has made essential contributions to individuals and families across Kern County by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities, and whereas CAP-K addresses underlying causes of poverty, alleviates the effects, and promotes dignity and self-sufficiency in the communities we serve, and whereas CAP-K delivered over 23 million pounds of food across Kern County in 2021 through the CAP-K Food Bank, and whereas CAP-K operates the Friendship House Community Center located in Bakersfield, intending to children within the community and providing a site for educational assistance, mentorship, and community, and whereas Community Action Network is celebrating 58 years of innovation, impact, and proven results for Americans. Now, therefore, I, Karen K. Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as National Community Action Month in our city, and thank, and thank CAP-K for its hard work and dedicated service to our community. Jeremy, thank you so much for all that you do. It's my pleasure to present this to you. Go.
All right. Thank you all, Mayor Go, and City Council members. I'm Jeremy Tobias, CEO of Community Action Partnership of Kern. And I'd like to thank you for declaring May as Community Action Month here in Bakersfield, which is our hometown and base of operations. The city has been a strong partner with CAP-K as we pursue better lives for Bakersfield and Kern County residents facing economic challenges. Community Action Partnership of Kern was established in May of 1965 as Kern County's official anti-poverty agency. We operate 17 life-changing programs, and our message to individuals and families during Community Action Month is to utilize our programs when in need. If people are eligible for help from one of CAP-K's programs, there's a good chance they could receive help from many other of our programs. We urge individuals to take advantage of the programs that CAP-K does provide, because we know that they will help them, help provide them with transformative changes in their lives. Here are just a couple of the highlights of our programs here in Bakersfield. As mentioned, our CAP-K Food Bank, we distribute more than 23 million pounds of food each year to locations throughout Bakersfield from our hub in southeast Bakersfield. We distribute food to 38 large commodity and senior food program locations here in Bakersfield, and we also distribute food to 127 food pantry locations here in Bakersfield. And as you know, construction is underway on our 40,000-square-foot expansion of the food bank, a project that was supported by the City of Bakersfield through commitment of CDBG and ARPA funding towards this critical expansion. Our Head Start and Early Head Start Child Education Program operates 17 centers across Bakersfield to help children ages zero to five build skills so that they can excel when they start kindergarten. Our Women Infant and Children Program has six locations in Bakersfield and provides food, resources, support, and education to mothers and their young children in their first five years of life. 211 Kern, which is a PUC-designated phone number operated by CAP-K, is based in downtown Bakersfield and provides services to most of the southern San Joaquin Valley. We connect people to more than 1,500 social safety net services and operate that service 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Our ability to provide these services relies on community partners to create success, and we are honored to partner with the City of Bakersfield to meet the needs of this community. If you know of anyone in need, please have them call 211 or visit capk.org to learn more about how we can help. And I'd like to thank Mayor Go for her kind words. We are one of the larger community action agencies in the nation. We have over 900 employees, and we operate in counties outside of Kern. We also have operations in San Joaquin County, up in the Stockton area, San Bernardino County, and other offices throughout the valley, and we have the finest staff, I think, in the nation of any community action agency. So, thank you for your support. Your support has been unwavering and has enabled us to operate many of these programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Jeremy.
Proclamation to the City Clerk's Office for the City of Bakersfield declaring the week of May 1, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week in Bakersfield.
Well, who might that be? Somebody's hiding back there. You know, we have a huge city and everything funnels right through this office. Come on up here, Julie Dramakis, our City Clerk. She was going to want to, she wanted to hide back there, but I'm going to make her come up here. May 1 through 7 is Professional Municipal Clerk's Week around the nation. Elections, keeping official records, making sure the city seal is not messed up, no. But doing everything, really funneling that we need, we're so privileged to have the support of people who work hard every day for our community. And the City Clerk's Office acts as that central point of local government, connecting all our many departments. And so, I'm just grateful that we have the honor of celebrating nationally, and I am going to have the pleasure of reading this proclamation. Whereas, the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk by participating in educational programs, workshops, and annual meetings, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Karen K. Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim May 1 through 7, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week in our city, and, and I have the pleasure to gather, council members, extending appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerks and to all the clerks who do the vital services that they perform. Thank you for your dedication to our community. Thank you so much, Julie. Appreciate you. Go. And have a few words and do a shout-out to your team.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Normally, I'm not on this end of the podium, so it's a little nerve-wracking. I would like to acknowledge and recognize my staff, Lorraine Reza, my Deputy City Clerk, Lisa Nahara, City Clerk Technician, and Clara Arias, who could not be here tonight, who serves as a clerk typist in the Clerk's Office. Their incredibly dedicated service and their commitment to quality, drive to provide excellent customer service, and willingness to go the extra mile. Without them, the Clerk's Office would be unable to function. So, thank you. And then, I have a short video. Here at the City Clerk's Office, we really have an opportunity to change the way that the citizens of Bakersfield perceive local government. Most people, when they first interact with government, they come from a place of distrust or skeptical, and we strive with our good customer service to relieve those anxieties and really provide the public with access to their business that's conducted by the city in a transparent and inclusive manner. I am Julie Dramakis, and I am the City Clerk for the City of Bakersfield. We serve the citizens, the mayor, the council, the city manager's office, and all city departments, striving to provide excellent customer service to our diverse community and to make local government as accessible and transparent to the citizens of Bakersfield. This, for me, is I've reached where I want to be, and at this point in my career, I am just trying to further my education, and I'm a firm believer in lifelong education to ensure that I provide the citizens with the best service, the most innovative service, and we're managing public funds, and we've been entrusted with a duty to manage those funds in a responsible manner. And along those lines, I strive to be familiar with the best practices and design our work to be the most efficient possible. I have to say, I love my job. If, what's challenging is taking on different duties every day, but overall, we enjoy serving the citizens, we enjoy making local government accessible to the citizens, and it's a rewarding profession to be in, knowing that the records and the archives and the history that we help to record and maintain will be available for years to come, and that we are an important link in making sure that local government conducts the people's business in a transparent and open manner.
And thank you all for being here. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos and for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the lobby or in the chamber. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting that we just completed, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
Thank you. And in keeping with the council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not listed on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the City Clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed to be speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during that portion of the meeting. If you're here to speak on hearing items 9A or 9B, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers tonight regarding items listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card regarding reports item 10A. That speaker is Sandra Placencia.
Thank you. And while she is coming forward, I just want to make sure that for the person who is providing the interpretation, Brianna, you know who that is, just make sure we're taken care of. So, we have interpretation available if anybody needs that. I think we've taken care of it. Welcome. You might just raise the mic a little. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Sandra Placencia Rodriguez, and I am a policy advocate for Leadership Council here in Kern County. I stand before you today on behalf of the community to urge the City Council to include programs and policy development in the budget for 2022 and '23, and to address current housing conditions in the city. The city's current affordable housing strategy process aims towards the production of affordable housing in the long term. However, Bakersfield residents need immediate help. With the issue of housing affordability becoming more and more urgent each day, we urge the city to consider the following budget asks to help residents facing housing insecurity: rental and mortgage assistance. Forty-three percent of residents in Bakersfield are tenants, 54 are renters with cost burden. Inflation and rent on the rise is getting harder and harder for working-class residents to make ends meet. While there is currently a rental relief program, the city must acknowledge that the program will eventually end. The city must utilize PSVS funds for ongoing rental assistance available to all residents, regardless of immigration status. Twenty-six percent of homeowners are cost burden. To ensure residents can continue to build well through homeownership and stay housed, the city must also invest in mortgage assistance programs for all residents, regardless of immigration status. And then, Section 8 as well. To qualify for Section 8, you have to make around 30% of the median income, which for a family of five is $31,000, meaning a family that makes around $32,000 a year may not qualify for Section 8 or vouchers. A two-bedroom apartment currently in Kern County is around $1,300, meaning half of their income will be going towards housing. That is not sustainable for a family of five. The waitlist for Section 8 is also closed, so we need to fix that. I also ask on behalf of rent stabilization, half of the city's rented population is cost burdened. They need to, you guys need to develop programs to aid in rent stabilizations. Residents have raised this as a major concern, and they're very stressed over this.
Ms. Placencia, your time is up. Thank you very much, and you can give that to the City Clerk for the rest of your statement. Thank you for sharing with us. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker, or, sorry, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Placencia, for your comments this evening. Mr. Clegg, if you can provide the council an update on our rental assistance program, what the status is, what the outcomes have been from that program, I'd like to see that. And also, if we can receive the letter that Ms. Placencia had prepared and her comments, and also provide some analysis on some of the recommendations that she has outlined. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
We have one public speaker, Michelle Harp.
Good evening, Mayor Go and council members. My name is Michelle Harp. In these financial trying times, we know that the cost of food is rising. We've all seen bare shelves at the grocery stores. One way to combat this is to have a vegetable garden and backyard hens. Of course, the City Council had previously passed the hen ordinance. Unfortunately, it was rescinded. Keeping hens will not only help with food insecurity, it will also help with the new waste recycle ordinance. The majority of chickens, kitchen scraps can be fed to the chickens, and the waste produced can be composted for our garden. Short, sweet, good point.
Thank you, Ms. Harp. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. So, next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A. One appointment at large to the Historic Preservation Commission to a term to expire March 30, 2025, due to the term expiration of Stephen Humphries. Three applications for appointment have been received from Eileen Diaz, Maurice Nadal, and Michael Anholt.
Thank you. As the City Clerk provides ballots to the council, I'd like to clarify for the public the voting process. Council will use ballots, and the City Clerk will make the outcome of the vote public. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public review in the City Clerk's office. Just remember to put your ward number on your ballot, please.
Mayor Go, Eileen Diaz received four votes. Maurice Nadal received one vote, and Michael Anholt received zero votes.
Thank you all for your willingness to serve, and thank you, Ms. Diaz, for your willingness, and congratulations on your appointment. Now, we need to actually have a motion. So, Councilmember Parlier, would you like to make that motion?
Make a motion to approve the candidate.
Make a motion to approve the candidate.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Bruce Freeman and Vice Mayor Weir absent.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointment of one alternate committee member, Ward 6, to complete a term to expire December 2024 to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to the resignation of Althea Bonnie Gillette Turner. One application for appointment has been received from Tai Hein Kwan.
This appointment is by Ward, therefore no ballots are necessary. I'm going to call Councilmember Gray now for the Ward 6 nomination of the alternate committee member. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to nominate Tai Kwan as the Ward 6 alternate KBB member.
Thank you, and is that a motion?
That's a motion.
That's a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you, and next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7R for approval. A staff memorandum has been provided transmitting the minutes.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier?
Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from a consent calendar item? Does any council member wish to pull a consent calendar item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I move the approval of consent calendar items 7A through 7R, as in Robert.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Hearings item 9A. Annual Action Plan, Budget and Finance Committee Report Regarding Fiscal Year 2022-23 Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, Housing Opportunities for Persons with HIV/AIDS, and Emergency Solutions Grant Action Plan Submittal.
Thank you. For the public hearing, each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, please. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, you've read the first public hearing item, and at this time, I will... I'm sorry. Open, we have a staff, a presentation for staff, so I'm going to ask City Manager Clegg, would you like to open comments before Mr. Soldanya?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I was just going to turn time to our Economic and Community Development Director, Paul Soldanya, for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Soldanya.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As the, as indicated in the agenda item, this is a referral from the Budget Committee regarding the 2022-23 HUD budget. So there are four allocations that we received from the federal government. One is directly for CDBG funds. These funds are used for funding both public services as well as public facilities, and I'll go through those here in the next slide. We also receive funding for the home program, which goes towards providing affordable housing and is part of the NOFA that we released for projects, which is actually coming out in this next week. The third pot of funding we receive is ESG funds, which goes towards addressing a variety of different homeless services and projects, including outreach, shelter operations, rapid rehousing, and prevention. And then the last one is HOPWA, which is for individuals that have AIDS, and that, that funding goes directly to Kern County Public Health, who administers those funds on behalf of the city. In terms of the public improvements, which is the majority of the funding that the city allocates each year, we, we do it in two different types of projects. The first is the public facilities, which is primarily in the curb, gutter, and sidewalk and ADA improvements. You can see this is a list of the projects that are recommended by the Budget Committee to, for completion in this next fiscal year. In addition to this, we also have wall rehabilitation and fence replacement improvements at Saunders Park that are part of these public improvements, as well as we set aside $51,000 for a home access rehab out of these public facility funds to address handicap accessibility at, at homes throughout the project area. So with that, I would be happy to address any questions that you may have about the projects or the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Soldanya. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? If so, please step forward. Seeing none? Now, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation?
Hello, Emma de la Rosa, Regional Policy Manager with Leadership Council. This is not necessarily in support or opposition. I am in support of the Madison area improvements. I did mention this last year. There were, there are some sidewalks that were lifted, and so we're happy to see that that specific allocation will, will support improvements in the area. But I did have a question about the home improvement funds, which you might be discussing after this? Yeah, okay. Then I think I might have came out too early. But I do want to mention that the, that we were informed by staff that home improvement, that, sorry, that the home funds could also include support for AC units in the community, so I hope to hear more about that as it is a huge concern for residents in the, in the city of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De la Rosa. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Don't see any other requests for comments? You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now the next item, please.
Public hearing to consider Conditional Use Permit Number 21-0200 Appeal. Golden Brothers LLC is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a 200-unit apartment complex pursuant to Bakersfield Municipal Code. Located in 4301 Verdugo Lane, Patricia, Regina, and others submitted an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve the proposal. Notice of exemption is on file.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our Development Services Director, Chris Boyle, will speak to this item.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg. Madam Mayor, council members? Our second item on tonight's public hearing agenda is item 9B, which is an appeal of a conditional use permit to provide for the development of an apartment complex entailing 200 units at the northwest corner of Hagaman and Verdugo in the fair city of Bakersfield. It's an 8.25-acre project with a general commercial and general, general commercial, general plan land use designation and a C1 neighborhood commercial zoning. Within the C1, residential uses are allowed through a conditional use permit, which is why this project went to the Planning Commission and now has been appealed forward to the city council. The 200 units are broken down into a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units with predominantly one-bedroom, 152 one-bedrooms, 42 and eight three-bedroom units. The two-story buildings entail 19 dwelling units, and they're approximately 30 feet tall with an attractive elevation. And the three-story units provide for 31 dwelling units and are 42 feet tall. The round red circles indicate the locations, the original locations of the two- and three-story units in the project overall. There's a one-story leasing office in the northeast corner of the site, and typical amenities of a market-rate project with pool, spa, pickleball, park area, and the like. There's one constraint which affects development of the site, which is a 25-foot no-build easement which runs diagonally across the project site and is reflective in the circulation that's there. Parking is provided per city ordinance. Required 280 parking stalls for the project, with 301 being provided, and each unit is provided with one covered parking stall. Vehicle access is gained from both Hagaman and Verdugo. One change that occurred at the Planning Commission is the masonry wall requirement. The original proposal asked for rot. Staff recommended split face to match the neighboring property, and there was revision to that proposal to provide an opportunity or an option for stucco with stone veneer accents, which was included as part of the original approval. On April 7, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution approving the conditional use permit with its recommended conditions of approval, and on April 14, an appeal was filed with concerns which included traffic, privacy, and property damage, with a notation in the last sentence which spoke to water, school, and public services concerned. It was signed by eight properties, which entailed 11 residences. Upon receipt of the appeal, Ward Councilmember Smith did outreach with the appellant staff and the property owners in looking to provide for some collaborative problem solving. And from that, there are several proposed amendments which could be acted upon by the council. The first one would be that trees in proximity to Building 400 would be enlarged to a 48-inch box. So a fairly mature tree upon planting. Building 400, which was a primary concern to the appellants, was reduced from a two-story to a single-story structure. Building 800 commensurately was increased from a two-story structure to a three-story structure, noting that a church property is to the immediate west. The wall along the western boundary was raised from six feet to eight feet between the sump in the northwest corner of the project and the church property to the south, and two 48-inch box trees were included along the northern portion of that wall to provide for additional screening for residents, residences to the north abutting to the sump. Ingress and egress is provided onto Hagaman Road, where there is full ingress and right-out-only egress on Hagaman. And a raised median is proposed on Verdugo across the project frontage, which would provide full access in terms of ingress with a left-turn lane and only right-out egress. Cumulatively, these amendments to the project provide for enhanced compatibility with the surrounding residential neighborhood. Oftentimes, when we're looking at appeals, we, we ask ourselves, what are actually, do our votes mean? I wanted to remind the council that to uphold the appeal would be to deny the project. So to say yes to the appeal would essentially say no to the project, and to deny the appeal would approve the project. So to say no to the appeal would approve the project. Just a point of correction, just in case. Staff in the Planning Commission continue to recommend the city council deny the appeal with incorporation of project amendments as proposed. That completes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? If so, please step forward at this time.
Mayor Go, I also wanted to announce that we did receive and transmit a staff memorandum that transmitted some additional correspondence in opposition.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Go and council members. Just to clarify my presentation, I'm not necessarily in favor or opposed.
So would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Randall Cates.
Thank you.
Area resident and property owner on the east side of Verdugo Lane. So just to clarify what my presentation is, should your, council deny, excuse me, if you're approving the appeal, if you approve the project, and if you deny the appeal, therefore approve the project, I would just request that one condition of approval be amended. And if I'm, may I use the overhead?
Sure.
Play a few figures here. This is basically my request. Just a slight change in verbiage here. This is Condition 3B22 with added, proposed edition of text shown in underlined text, deletion shown in strikeout font. And this was in, I, sorry, it was late. I submitted a comment letter yesterday evening. So this is in here as well. And if, if you'd like, I can hand a copy to the, either to the director or to staff.
Just give it to city clerk, and we're able to see it on our screens.
Okay. And may I clarify? Is anybody else looking to speak?
Just go ahead and complete whatever. If you have something else to say, go ahead and clarify.
But yeah, my comments just pertain to the, like I said, that one condition of approval with the block wall design along Verdugo Lane, basically the red area shown on this image here. So as the condition reads right now, they basically have two options. So as it reads right now, there's two different options. There's either, either split-face block wall, the top image, or the bottom image. These are samples. Just stucco wall with stone veneer. But what I'm recommending is, again, the only difference here is the bottom image. I'm recommending either the, the split-face block wall without the stone veneer, the top image, or the split-face block wall with the stone veneer. So again, that allows the applicant some flexibility. Here's a close-in view, just a sample of a split-face block wall. Again, that mimics natural stone as opposed to stucco. This one doesn't have the stone veneer. This sample here, you have, have the stone veneer columns and then a stone veneer line across the top. What the applicant specifically requested at, at the Planning Commission on April 7, and this is just a sample. and this is just a sample here, they were proposing a stucco-faced block wall along Verdugo with those stone veneer accents as shown here. Again, a big difference in terms of the texture. Yeah, and then just to clarify, this is Google Earth image on Hagaman looking north on Verdugo Lane. As far as the eye can see, it's over a mile distance from Hagaman up north to Olive Drive. And along Verdugo Lane, it's over one mile. 100% of that block wall facing is split face. So certainly requiring split face block wall would fit in quite well with the existing neighborhood. And this is just an image directly across the street from the proposed project. Again, split face wall. This track was built over 20 years ago and as you can see, this block wall looks basically brand new. Just by contrast. This is just a sample of stucco, a stucco wall. Those deteriorate over time. They need to be repatched, repainted. And again, that's just extra expense for the applicant to consider as well. And this is the actual, as you can see here, you have the project site here on the left, proposed project site, and the existing split face wall. So like I said, having a stucco wall right there on the left, just having that transition of two different wall types, it doesn't really make sense aesthetically. Here's just a sample. This is west Bakersfield off Stockdale Highway. Now, if you had two different types of walls basically abutting each other, aesthetically, that doesn't really fit well. And I won't go through all these photos. But I took photos of all the intersections along Verdugo between Hagaman and Olive Drive. All 14 of these images, they're all showing block wall just to give you an idea of what's actually out there in the neighborhood in case anybody hasn't been there. Just a few more points here. This is just a screenshot from the renderings that the applicant provided. So as you can see here, a large portion of the building facade is stucco. So if you had a stucco wall, visually that makes the building kind of look more impactful. It's just that much more stucco looking out at you. And a point of clarification, this condition, as I understand, only applies to the outer side of the wall. So like I said, the applicant would have complete flexibility if they're concerned with the way the wall looks from inside the proposed complex. You know, on the inner side facing away from Verdugo, they could have stucco or whatever coating they so choose. Again, split face wall that mimics natural stone. And like I said, there's a 15-foot required landscape buffer here. So just having natural landscaping, it kind of makes sense to have natural-looking stone behind it as opposed to just flat stucco. And yeah, just a point about the planning commission hearing. I understand there were many issues at play, very important issues. And perhaps the planning commission had kind of got, you know, not sidetracked. But they had many issues to contend with. So I just think maybe the wall wasn't given the amount of attention it deserved. There was just one commissioner that, you know, he concurred with the applicant and then there was really no debate among commissioners about the merits of the wall one way or the other.
Sir, do you have anything else, just in case somebody else wants to speak?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, just to conclude. So again, that's, in my comment. Yeah, and just, I made a comment also, I'll just, I'll leave it at that. In my comments, I had a comment about the general plan. It appears having a stucco wall would not be consistent with the county general, or excuse me, with the city general plan, metropolitan Bakersfield general plan. Because right here it says, "One of the policies that requires new multiple-family residential projects to incorporate design features such as screen walls which foster compatibility with the existing and future single-family residences." And I would interpret that as meaning the walls surrounding them because the residences are in tracks, they were built at the same time as the wall. So it's, so I think to be consistent with the metropolitan Bakersfield general plan, split face would be needed, would be appropriate. Yeah, and so just in conclusion, as stated in the comments I submitted, I'm just proposing this small revision to the text of Condition 3B22. So I think that's the appropriate course of action. I'd certainly, any members of the council, if you're welcome to disagree with that. If you disagree, I'd respectfully ask that we, you know, you kind of share your thoughts on why. That would be appreciated. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? This would be the time to speak. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Welcome.
Welcome. Russell Johnson, Common Sense Consulting on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Mayor Go and council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. We're in favor of staff's recommendation. We did see the admin memo with the adjustments that were made. We're, the applicant and the property owner are in favor of those adjustments. I do want to address, I want to say a couple things and then I'll address the comments made by Mr. Cates. First, we want to thank all the neighbors that came out to our public meeting. We did a lot of extensive public outreach. We went not only door-to-door, we mailed to all the surrounding neighbors. We also hosted an ice cream social divorce to really get out and get, meet with all the neighbors and deal with a lot of their concerns early on. We feel that the project that is submitted before you today with the revisions is a really, really nice project. It's going to be a gated community within northwest Bakersfield. This gated apartment complex is going to provide much-needed housing stock to help the city meet their RENA numbers. We also think it's going to provide a great experience for folks to live in the city of Bakersfield. That being said, I want to address the comments by Mr. Cates real quick. So I'm not going to run you through my entire PowerPoint, but I want to show you just the aerial of our project. So actually, I'm going to show you the gated entrance. So one of the goals early on from the property owner, specifically the direction he gave was, "Do not give me a project that is going to be a downgrade to the community." He said, "Make sure that whatever we propose, that it's going to be an improvement to the community." So therefore, the project that was proposed that you see before you is you have this regal entrance, it's going to be a nice gated community. The whole point of having that option for the stucco-covered wall is to keep with the theme of the existing structures that are going to be inside. Here's an example of what those structures will look like based on our renderings. So it fits with the theme. That's why at the planning commission hearing, actually, one of the planning commissioners asked how, what we thought about the wall choice. And the comment that we came back with was, "Hey, you know what? We'd like to have the choice to be able to have this stucco wall. We think it's actually an improvement for the community. We think it adds to the atmosphere and what we're trying to deliver for the community." So with that, we, that was our comment. The planning commission added that condition as you see it today. So we appreciate Mr. Cates' comments, but from the perspective, we like the condition the way it is. And if the planning director feels that it's incongruent with the neighborhood or if he feels that it's incongruent, as Mr. Cates said, with the general plan, then the planning director can deny it based upon his discretion. We just like having that flexibility. We want to be able to create some consistency and have a project that improves the area. So with that, I'll thank staff for their recommendation. Thank the staff for working with us. Thank the council and thank the residents who put in a lot of time and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to rebut in opposition?
Okay, so I appreciate what Mr. Johnson just said. And like I said, originally, going into the planning commission hearing, like I said, we had only one option. It was split face without any mention of the stone veneer. So now they do have, in fact, two different options. Or excuse me, two options right now. Stucco with stone veneer and then split face without stone veneer. So like I said, the proposal that I'm bringing forth here, it still allows the applicant two different options, meaning split face with the stone veneer or split face without the stone veneer. And just to address Mr. Johnson's point a moment ago about the wall fitting with the project, I'd actually make the argument that the split face would be a better choice to aesthetically blend. Meaning by that, like I said, these buildings, the bulk of the facade, it's either off-white, flat stucco or stone veneer. If you have, up here, if you have a split face, that ties together both, it would actually be a lighter color. So if you had that split face, it would tie together the off-white color of the stucco on the apartment buildings as well as the stone veneer. Like I said, because this option, stone veneer on the wall, that's the identical type of stone veneer on the actual buildings as proposed. So it would actually tie together the two different types of building materials, stucco and stone. And again, just to reiterate the way it reads here, it would basically mean, "Split face masonry block wall consistent with the adjacent neighborhoods to the north of the project site with or without the stone veneer accents." So the applicant would have that flexibility with the accents. Yeah, and again, I'll just reiterate what I said earlier about metropolitan Bakersfield general plan. Again, that is up to your council to decide. But you know, in my assessment, that wording is pretty clear in terms of, they actually say fostering compatibility. Yeah, so fostering compatibility, you have Verdugo Lane over one mile of length, 100% split face wall. I think compatible with a mile of split face wall would be split face wall on the project frontage. So again, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. Is there anyone else who wishes to rebut in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to rebut in support? Seeing none, I will return this, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, staff and neighborhood and the developer, Russell Johnson, representing the developer. I did meet with all the above. I think, number one, staff did a great job at the planning commission presenting how things are different now when it comes to approving multifamily. The state is very aggressive and for us to actually deny multifamily is just not on the table at all, even if we wanted to. And then I met with the neighborhood and we addressed concerns that they had about overlook and more trees and access on Verdugo and egress on Hagaman. Went back to Mr. Johnson and working with his client. They agreed to the various changes. And so I think we have something here that is not what we originally had and not what we have now, but I think works for everybody. So I appreciate, you know, changing a two-story building to a single story and going from two to three on another one. And the large trees and the median in Verdugo and the egress on Hagaman are all items that cost money and change the project, but make it better for the neighbors. And so I appreciate those efforts. As far as Mr. Cates and his comments about the wall, I am going to stay with the options as given. I think that works and it's up to the planning director if he thinks it's compatible. I believe it is in that it's, as he stated, down at the bottom of, or the south side of that wall. And then you're adjacent to the commercial site. So the apartment, so it's residential for a mile and a half and then it's the apartment site and the commercial site. So the apartment site to me is really the transition area and to work on it, matching the architecture of the apartment site makes sense to me. So with that, I'm going to move for approval with the additional conditions that are outlined in the blue memo or, I'm not sure how to state that, but they were in the, "Building 400 shall be constructed as a single story. Building 800 shall be constructed as three-story. Trees shall be 48-inch box size for landscaping. Located north and west of building 400. Eight-foot-tall masonry wall shall be constructed along the western property line between the southern boundary of the retention basin and northern boundary of the religious facility." This one, I wanted to change a little bit. It said, "Two trees, 48-inch box size shall be planted in this area." I wanted specifically the northern area, those northern two trees as shown on the site plan. Egress shall be provided onto Hagaman Road and a raised median shall be constructed on Verdugo Lane from the Hagaman Road intersection extending north. It's actually just along the, I think your presentation stated, along the frontage of the project. Median shall be installed in a manner to provide for a left turn into the project and right turn out only from the project site. No left turn onto Verdugo. Design shall be approved by City Public Works Department Director prior to construction. So with that, I move for approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments? I don't see any requests to speak. Councilmember Arias.
Just clarifying that motion, is that a motion to?
It's a motion to deny the appeal, approve the project.
Thank you.
I don't see any other requests from council. Just trying to get some clarification here. Yeah, she wants to make sure.
It's confusing when a no is a yes.
So if you support staff's recommendation, you would hit yes,
Mayor, if I might, I provide additional clarification. To deny the appeal is to approve the project. To uphold the appeal is to deny the project. So if you vote no on the appeal, you approve the project.
No.
The motion was to deny the appeal. So you, if you are, and approve the project, so if you're in favor of the project, you are in favor of the motion.
Yeah. Can you just bring Councilmember Gray's vote up again, please? Can you just bring Councilmember Gray's vote up again, please? It can be very confusing with these double, double, double negatives.
I had to clear the whole vote, so if everyone could vote once again, please.
It's okay. It's better to do it this way and get it clear.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmember Bruce Freeman absent.
Thank you. And I will call for a seven-minute recess right now and we'll be right back. So, seven minutes. Thank you.
And since we're recessed, I'll just thank the neighbors one more time. Very accommodating and Russell Johnson, the developer. It's great when you can work things out and address all of, not all the concerns, most of the concerns. Thank you.
Sometimes stuff happens with our little technology, so I'm glad all the cars have been moved appropriately. And now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the next item?
Reports item 10A, fiscal year 2022-23, proposed budget overview.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have provided one preview of our Public Safety Vital Services tax measure budget, but this is actually our first preview on the citywide budget. We'll go over what the schedule looks like. We're not taking action tonight. This is our introduction. Our budget officer is going to go over some of this context for you. And I just have to say, we're very fortunate to have a budget officer now on our budget team and helping us out. And so we're very thankful to Mario Roscoe for leaning in and helping us get through this process along with many others whom we'll thank throughout the presentation. But we'll have Mario kick us off.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we will be presenting the City of Bakersfield's fiscal year 2022-2023 proposed budget. We'll be presenting an overview of the 2022-23 budget. We hope to present you a balanced budget that staff has worked very hard over the past four to five months to prepare, along with city council staff, members of the community, funding agencies. We will present you a budget that directly supports city council goals and strategic priorities. We anticipate modest revenue growth for the fiscal year 23 budget. We will be presenting a budget that maintains all existing programs and services, a budget that enhances public safety, addresses homelessness, makes considerable investments in local parks projects, revitalization of neighborhoods, and infrastructure enhancements. An outline of this year's budget. We will provide you with some highlights and major initiatives for the fiscal year 23 budget, some PSVS measure summary highlights, new position requests for all funds, major revenue sources and projections, expenditure summaries, capital improvement project summary, and the budget process schedule. Some big-picture budget considerations that we took into account when preparing the fiscal year 23 budget. The local economy continues to rebound from COVID-19 impacts. We continue to see demand for services and projects continue to grow. We have major revenues showing modest signs of continued growth in different sectors. And we've also factored in some negotiated items that we've included in our budget.
And now, Mayor and council, I'll walk through some highlights in next year's budget related to your council goals as currently established. And again, these are just the highlights, lots of details in the materials related to the budget. And our budget workshops will get into much of those details, but here's some highlights. As it relates to public safety, again, continues to be one of our top priorities. 45% of the general fund resources are allocated to policing and the police department. There is one new position in sworn staff, a captain, to help manage some of the new initiatives and programs that we're bringing forward. There's additional civilian positions to really strategically support the efforts of our officers and ensuring that our officers are out, you know, doing the work in the community and not at desks. Also, some of those are specialized positions like a crime analysis supervisor. We've never had someone at that level of expertise within our crime analysis unit to date, and that's just one example there. We continue to leverage private security services where it makes sense. There's going to be more use of security cameras as a force multiplier related to public safety. We do have two academies planned for this coming year. Even though we're about 30 shy, we think sometimes with attrition, it's just wise to go ahead and plan for two academies. You'll note there's an increase in resources allocated to the police department of 10% in comparison to last year's budget. And we also have some enhancements in the fire department as well, related to fire apparatus and a few positions, helping us to meet some of our accreditation goals and maintain our Class II insurance rating. As it relates to homelessness, we continue to invest through additional services, and one of those is in shelter beds. It continues to fund our operating costs for the navigation center and the new operating costs with the 169-bed expansion that will be complete during the fiscal year. We're going to continue to allocate ARPA funds as well as our own funds towards affordable housing. We also are going to continue to fund our four rapid-response teams. And as recently noted, our fourth team is fully deployed now in the River area. We also will continue the many other services that are in support of partners that provide those services to homeless individuals, as well as our cleanups in downtown. As it relates to fiscal solvency, we've made a lot of progress in our reserves. We're still at our reserve goal and so don't have major investments there, but we're going to continue to invest in getting better and faster and smarter through our internal process and internal audit program, as well as this is the year that we will actually have under contract a new firm to move forward with our new ERP. We've been in that planning and selection process. In this coming fiscal year, we will be in implementation mode. Quality of life, sorry the text is a little bit small, but we have a lot of investments in quality of life and infrastructure in this coming year. Considerable work around parks, $8 million there. We do have a new position just because of the number of capital projects related to parks right now. We have a park technician to support that planning and development work. We're also looking to create a new code team that's focused on special projects, specifically our chronic nuisance properties. Also looking to expand our Clean City efforts. We have eight teams currently. We're proposing three additional teams. We're looking to also do some streetscape and median beautification efforts. And also, we've proposed the First Time Public Art Program. And we have had line items in our budget for Museum of Art and Symphony that will continue as we have in years past. As it relates to economic development, this is an interesting one because we've made really significant investments the last two fiscal years to build up that department. At mid-year, we allocated, you know, several million dollars additional towards economic development. We're not actually proposing many new dollars towards economic development, but as an emphasis, we're increasing investment in the EOAs in this coming year. We're continuing with the implementation of the Economic Development Strategic Plan and our business assistance tools, continued investment in property acquisition for redevelopment and community revitalization. Those are all items that have been in past budgets, but we're continuing to keep those in this coming year's budget. As it relates to infrastructure, we do have a couple of positions. Again, we have so many projects moving. We've got an additional inspector to help facilitate and move those along. We have more than $60 million in different streets or right-of-way improvements from a variety of funding sources, and you'll see some of those spelled out a little more specifically in coming slides. We did create those grant match funds as proposed, $4 million for multi-use trails, $3 million for other grant matching. We also have other dollars from other, another source or utility surcharge to help finish out two of our multi-use paths that are in progress. And then, sometimes because we've done a really good job historically of having these things well-planned and well-figured out, but we can't forget about our other utilities, you know, $16 million of investment in our wastewater system, also solid waste, over 1.5 million in capital projects there, and $4.6 million in capital projects in our water resources department. As it relates to goal number seven, we do have a few items coming forward. We're proposing, again, as we did two years ago, some gateway beautification dollars. We also are going to continue to fund the existing Clean City teams and those pop-up events to help support a cleaner city. We also are continuing our funding, of course, of Visit Bakersfield and our employee development and actually a new allocation around a community engagement toolkit. We did review that within the PSVS budget presentation a few weeks ago. And then, of course, we've also made significant, excuse me, significant investments at mid-year around downtown development and redevelopment, but we're going to continue some of those capital projects in this coming year. And then also some of our specific contracts in support of downtown revitalization continue to be in the budget. And then, lastly, in PSVS are some dollars to help us complete the Complete Streets project along Chester Avenue from Brundage to Truxton. So with that, those are our highlights. We have several more slides to go and can take questions on any of those highlights, but if not, we'll move quickly into some of our fiscal overview, which gives you some of the numbers. And I'll ask Randy McKeegan, our finance director, to help walk us through that.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. It's a pleasure to be able to present once again this fiscal overview to the City Council, allowing you to review the numbers and ultimately make that decision to approve it, once you go through the budget workshops over the next couple of weeks. I just want to reiterate what was presented earlier. This budget was presented and prepared in a conservative way. We went through and understood that there is some uncertainties still within the economy, but we still built a budget that was conservative, built in some contingencies, and also had the ability to add some growth to certain important services and programs. So let's go ahead and start by looking at the numbers. The proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year, this shows the resources, but the proposed budget is $735 million. This includes $264 million in revenues from enterprise services related to wastewater, solid waste, parking garage and the like, other enterprise activities, and over $372 million from the general fund. The largest, as you see, the largest revenue source to cover this budget is taxes and assessments of $342 million, 46.6% of the total budget. The next highest revenue stream is charges for services at $232.9 million or 31.7% of the total budget. Just an additional note, I wanted to point out that of that charges for services, 60% of that amount are charges for the enterprise activities, wastewater, solid waste, and the like. And I also wanted to point out that transfers in number, that's $62 million. That covers revenues to cover capital improvement projects and debt service costs, so that's what that larger number is related to. This next slide breaks out that same budget number of $735 million by function. So what you see here is a total increase from the prior year adopted budget of 7.62%. The large, the actually, you see there that the operating increase of 10.5%, but we also see a reduction in capital improvement projects of 8.9%. So as the footnote points out, that number in capital improvement, proposed capital improvement projects is based on the needs we see throughout the city and funding streams. So in this case, the reduction is primarily related to available funds for streets and road projects that they were reduced compared to the prior year. So that's what relates to that decrease in capital improvements. But again, overall increase in the proposed budget of 7.6%. Again, this is the $735 million broken out by department now. So what you see here is that the largest funded department is Public Works at $239 million. That's an increase of 5.8% from the prior year. We also see that in total, for public safety, we have funded $211.95 million for the police and fire services, an increase of $13.5 million. Again, I wanted to take a special note to that additional line item, that non-departmental $99.7 million. That relates both back to the revenues we're talking about with the transfers, so covering projects, CIP projects and debt services. It also includes set-asides for contingencies. So from there, I wanted to really hone in on the general fund, obviously the fund that covers the city's day-to-day operations for the most part, really focus in again on those figures. So what we see here for our general fund, proposed general fund budget, we have a budget of $372 million proposed for the general fund. This chart breaks out and compares the actual revenues from 2021 and the estimated revenues we anticipate to receive by the end of this fiscal year, '21, '22. And then again, it breaks out, what you actually see here, if we look at this, and it kind of points out that the level of conservative approach that we took. The proposed estimated revenue at the end of this year is $368 million. We propose an increase to $372 million between those two years, and that's less than, actually a little over 1%. So we are still building a conservative budget, even though there is an increase there. So this breaks out that same revenue stream, that same revenue chart graphically, so you can see the level of, really, the level of reliance that we have on sales tax and property taxes. That purple and green pie section bakes up over 50%, and that's our sales tax revenue. And a quarter of our revenue comes from property tax. So again, we have heavy reliance on those sources, and obviously, we need to watch those closely. We have been receiving information from our sales tax consultants specifically, showing that there are some levels of growth still expected, but we are watching those closely and we get quarterly updates on that. So we will address those as changes come forth from that consultant. And so I'm going to focus in on those three areas a little bit more closely of revenue. The first item here is property tax, so what we're going to show is some trend data where we are, where we've been and where we are going or expected to go. So again, this is property tax that we receive via, through the county, and it's based on the property tax assessed valuations that we get from the county. So what you see here is an increase, the blue sections are the actual revenues, the purple lines are the percentage increases or decreases each, through each year, and that what you see there is a 4% increase from our revised estimate to our proposed budget for in-property taxes to $98.5 million. Again, that's based on property taxes evaluations from the county. This next trend analysis shows the sales tax, the standard or regular sales tax revenue, the Bradley Burns. Again, same idea, the blue numbers are actual revenues and the green line is the increases or decreases each fiscal year. And again, we see here that the proposed or revised estimate for the upcoming fiscal year in purple is $94.4 million, and we only, actually, it's basically flat. We're projecting less than a quarter percent increase in that revenue stream for the upcoming fiscal year, again, taking that conservative approach we talked about. And again, this next is a trend analysis that relates to the Public Safety Vital Services tax measure. Again, we've only had that revenue stream since the first, the third quarter, or fourth quarter, I'm sorry, of 2018, 19. So you see the continued growth in that revenue. So you see the continued growth in that revenue stream, and we continue to expect growth in that revenue stream. And so again, the green line shows the increases each fiscal year, and we anticipate a 2.3% increase in the upcoming fiscal year. It's a little different from our Bradley Burns. We've talked about this before, but the sales tax for transaction and use taxes that we receive from the state, the calculation is a little bit different. It takes into account online sales much more, so we get more of those revenues from online sales directly from those particular purchases. So that's why we have a slight increase compared to the Bradley Burns number. And so here's the breakdown of the general fund by department again, or function, oh, it's department. So we have that $372 million with a 19.6% increase from the adopted budget from prior year. So the largest increase you'll see there is actually non-departmental, it's a 193% increase from the prior year. That relates to more money being set aside in contingencies and for contributions for public safety partnerships through the PSVS fund, and also has additional amounts, as I said, contingent amounts that we've set aside in case there are some adjustments needed in the upcoming fiscal year. I also wanted to point out that the general fund, all the other general fund increases and all the other departments primarily relate to salaries and benefit changes specifically related to step increases. We talked about the additional positions through PSVS, and there are some additional general fund positions, but the largest percentage of our benefits relates to increases in steps and also $5 million anticipated increase in CalPERS costs. So that's the main driver of that increase of 19.6% from the prior year. And I believe, okay, the next item is, takes that same number, $372 million, and breaks it out by percentage. So again, you see, as we tend to have, the majority of our general fund budget funds the public safety services, both fire and police make up over 55% of our budget. And so the next largest department is Public Works at 9.1 million, 9.1% of the total budget. Again, this budget was presented and built on a conservative approach. We have contingencies within our budget, but we do feel comfortable with the estimates in the budget we've put together and the numbers that we've put together to date. So with that, I'm available for any questions specifically on the numbers. If you don't have any questions, I'll pass the baton back to Assistant, I mean, City
Thank you, Randy. So we did want to give a couple of quick highlights again. This is largely for the public record. We've reviewed this as of April 6th, the public safety vital services tax measure. Again, as a reminder, our 13 priorities. As you look at the actuals that we've received related to public safety vital services tax, they continue to be sizable and above projections, and this points to, again, our level of confidence in a conservative estimate next year in about $101 million in revenues. What's interesting about, you'll see this, the numbers here are larger actually than the 101. You'll see the 113, that's because we have some carryovers of revenues, actual revenues, you know, collected in this fiscal year. Also, I would just point out to the council that when we talk about the numbers, there's, our sales tax consultants are providing us analysis that our revenues are likely to be much higher than that $101 million. And, you know, as a choice, as a fiscally conservative choice, we're putting our revenue estimates much lower than that, and so you're actually going to see a contingency amount in the public safety vital services tax of around $4 million that we're recommending. We don't, you know, allocate to specific programs or costs and just call that a contingency because we're estimating, you know, a much lower amount than what is likely to occur, but we're just playing it safe is what I would say on that. You'll note that salaries and benefits there in the $46 million range, operating costs about 32. What's included there are contracts for service. These are things like the cleanup contracts that we have, and they are things that we think are important but are more flexible if we chose to, in future years, reduce those or remove those or pursue other topics. We're not as locked in as we are on some of our personnel-related ongoing costs. And then the operating capital or capital improvements are, in addition to having a number of one-time capital improvement projects, we have what I would call recurring one-time allocations. For example, your council committed to five years of allocating $5 million to the affordable housing in those first five years of the public safety vital services tax. So we've been including those in our ongoing number, but truly it's a recurring one-time number that does, again, give us some flexibility as we make more progress around affordable housing. Do we then choose to continue that after those first five years? Council may choose to do that, or we may choose to move in other directions with those funds. And so they are recurring, so we're not bringing forward that number, you know, each year as a capital item, but in essence, it is a one-time expense that won't be forever in our vital services spending on an ongoing basis. You'll note from the pie chart, again, police, fires, you know, significant portions. I think economic development, because we did not have a department, sees a bigger share than you might see otherwise. And then Public Works in this coming year has grown a bit larger because we're spending more infrastructure than we have historically. This is another look at over a three-year period, and the percentages, again, that are going towards personnel, as I mentioned, those operating costs, operating capital, and then our capital improvements. And then just one more look by department. Again, you'll see where the bulk is going towards public safety with some other key strategic investments in other areas, and some of those contracts for services are just highlighted here that are more notable. Our navigation center is a sizable contract for service, as well as our teams helping with security and cleanups and the like. As presented again on April 6th, we have significant one-time investments in this coming round. We do see there that $7.9 million towards ongoing. I would note in that amount as well, about half of that is personnel-related, and the other half are startup costs or contract costs that won't recur necessarily in future years, particularly the vehicle costs and the startup costs for employees. Those won't be recurring ongoing costs in next year's budget as an example. And then just a position summary related to public safety vital services tax. We have 12 in the police department and development services. That's largely that new code enforcement team for the substandard properties, as well as a long-range mobility planner. In the city manager's office, we have some positions, but they're related to public safety around our violence intervention program. In the fire department, that's dispatchers and one maintenance worker, and in finance and human resources, some key gaps in supporting the increased staffing and efforts in the other departments. And then just wanted to provide some update for the council related to our oversight committee meetings. We held three meetings with the oversight committee this spring, just related to this year's budget. We had two meetings prior related to major budget. This fourth year of proposals was approved in all cases as being found to be consistent with the 13 priorities of the measure and to forward to council. I think it's fair to say that there was general feedback from the committee about prioritizing contracts for service as opposed to the long-term obligations of city employee costs, taking a hard look at that ongoing funding to ensure that it's within balance. There were a lot of questions about street improvements, and we provided some context to the larger budget. As you saw, there's $60 million in streets projects, $20 million in street repaving, not a lot of that coming out of PSVS, but I think it just reflects the community's interest in improved roads from the feedback from the committee. And there was also some feedback about two of our programs that have not been fully outlined as of yet, wanting to know some of the details on those, and had shared perspective with the committee that this council will see those details before those projects move forward, and that's in the council's purview. We did, as we have in years past, in the actual staff report that we'll bring forward on the budget, identify instances where there were dissenting votes from the oversight committee and the rationale that they provided for those dissenting votes. That's a practice we've had over the last couple of years, and that will be in the detailed budget documents that the council receives. Again, this is shifting gears into a new position summary for citywide, not just the public safety vital services tax. There are some other positions in the general fund. We have seven total positions in the general fund, and then we have several positions in our enterprise funds. But again, if you reflect on staffing increases in the first three years of the public safety vital services tax, we added 300 employees in the first three years. This year, we're adding 26. So we're really at a stage where we have made some significant gains in rightsizing the organization. I think we're going to find some areas where we still need to strategically be thoughtful about positions, but we're really entering a different phase of staffing as it relates to that measure, and it's much more consistent with the other funding sources, which, you know, have much more measured and incremental staffing considerations. The mix of positions in this proposed budget you see here, again, you know, largely police department, fire department. We have, again, in the city manager's office, there's four, but three of those are related to public safety and development services, again, largely around code enforcement. And then in Public Works, it's largely for our enterprise divisions within Public Works. And we've taken an approach that all positions need to be tied to one of the city council's strategic goals and what outcomes those positions will deliver in support of those goals. This is a position chart for citywide. Again, you'll see there previous years, some more notable growth, and this year, much more measured. But interestingly, we'll see in the next slides, oh, there's one before that, just by funding source. Again, these are the newly proposed positions, of course. The general fund, a little bit of room there, but we kept it pretty targeted to very strategic positions, and then those 26 in PSVS. Reflecting on staffing per 1,000 residents, this is a community that's continued to grow rapidly. That's a community that experienced some fiscal challenges since 2006, 2007 until 2018, notable fiscal challenges. And so on a per-resident basis, we're still building back to even rates that were in 2000, let alone 1990, where we had more employees per population and a smaller, you know, footprint of service for this community. And this is a real opportunity to both remain a lean and mean team, is what I say, but also right-sized to be able to provide the level of service that our community is asking for. Just a couple of miscellaneous items. We think it's important at a high level to just reflect quickly our rates for our enterprise funds as it relates to refuse or solid waste. We have significant cost drivers in new legislation as well as changes in the market, and so we're seeing a 13% increase there as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee to this council. As it relates to sewer rates, we don't see an overall increase. There's some ratepayer equity, which means our commercial ratepayers were actually paying a little too much after a rate study was conducted, and our residential a little lower, and so there's a slight balancing between those. It's a minimal impact to our residential ratepayers over a one-year period. It's about a $5 difference, but did want to note that in transparency. But overall, the rate structure does not, it's a revenue-neutral rate structure in our wastewater or sewer. As it relates to our domestic water rates, we're also seeing increasing costs there. We have significant treatment costs for chemicals or contaminants, and we also are doing more in the capital side as the system is beginning now to see some aging. We've got notable capital costs, and so proposing a 5% rate increase there. And I would just note, the Water Board recommended that to come forward to the council, but also recommended a long-term rate study for the water utility to better understand what some of those costs may be over time. And so that'll be coming back in this coming year before next year's budget process. And then a few other miscellaneous items that are more sizable around vehicles. We have just a normal vehicle replacement. This is not for new employees. You know, we have a large fleet, and we have 133 vehicles that are due for replacement. Those, every vehicle has a replacement schedule and a cost that is allocated on an annual basis towards saving up for its replacement. And so that 13.9 million is, you know, within the funds that are available and budgeted to be able to do that, largely in police and some in fire, and then a mix of other departments. We do a significant analysis to make sure we're getting as much useful life out of those vehicles as we can, and our average age of vehicle is beyond the industry standard here in Bakersfield, part because of how well we do our maintenance and tracking, and part because we try to run lean. Also, in technology, there's significant investment in recent years, and we're trying to keep up with that. And so we've got notable computer replacement for general staff, as well as our mobile data computers for the police department. And then in years past, we've had the council contingency somewhere between 100 or 200,000. We had a little opportunity to increase that this coming year, not a lot, but set aside $300,000 in council contingency. At this point, we'll just do a high level of our capital improvement program. So again, for the public record, largely these bullets are here to outline that it is a five-year planning process, that these are estimated costs in future years, the next coming year, those are hard costs, and these are for larger projects. As you'll note here, it's a $93 million capital improvement program for this coming year of Public Works, including TRIP is the largest item there. We are making significant investments in police facilities in this coming budget. And again, we noted the large amount in parks as well. What does the $60 million, what is that made up of in the number we gave previously? Again, we've got nearly $9 million in street repair and resurfacing, and there is $6 million just for one really large project on one of our main arterials, that's Stockdale Highway. And we've mentioned the grant match funds. We also have another component of Stockdale Highway that's a separate project, that it's a large one, and we feel there's good coordination and sequencing between those two. And then a significant investment in multi-use paths. And continuing in the list, we have some more specific improvements that are listed there, and we are continuing with the streetlight investments, $1 million a year until we complete all of the recommended placements of those streetlights. We also have some investment in our traffic signaling and signalization. And then lastly, we have, combined from two different funding sources, some from our capital outlay and some capital outlay and some from PSVS, to continue to get at alleyways and streets in our disadvantaged This is just a quick summary of those parks items. Again, we reviewed this largely at our presentation on PSVS, because most of the funds are coming from PSVS on the left-hand side there. And, and actually, on this slide, it's both sides, but then on the, oh, excuse me, there was one other piece on the parks that there's some CDBG funding that's going towards two parks that weren't listed here, but otherwise, these are all PSVS funds. As it relates to public safety, as I noted, we've got some police facilities that we're continuing to address deferred maintenance. That's our, our academy, training academy, as well as rounding out some other projects at other facilities that have not quite been completed. In the miscellaneous bucket, again, we've talked about the public art program. We do have several security projects that have been in process, like the card readers and the improvements to this council chambers, security cameras that have been, that we've been doing in phases. And so we have several projects that are Phase Two or Phase Three of those safety improvements across all city facilities that add up to a notable total of $1 million towards those safety and security improvements. And then continuing to be able to make some improvements to our amenity facilities, such as our arena and convention center. And I'm just going to invite Mario back up to go through a couple of process points for us, and then we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Manager Clegg. So for the fiscal year '22, '23 process, first of all, the current and archived budget information will be available at bakersfieldcity.us. The proposed budget book will be online tomorrow for viewing. All department presentations will also be made available one day after they're presented to the council. And we have, as City Manager Clegg mentioned earlier, we will be emailing you the PSVS recommendations and feedback reports so that you can have those for review and for your So our next presentations will be Monday, May 9th at noon, and the departments that will be presenting will be general government, technology services, human resources, city attorney, finance department, and police and fire. So they will be making their departmental presentations on May 9th. On June 1st, we will have the public hearing for the fiscal year '23 proposed budget. Then on June 6th, we'll have the second half of the budget presentations at noon, Monday, June 6th at noon, we'll have water resources, public works, development services, economic and community development. Visit Bakersfield ASM and Recreation and Parks will be presenting to you. And then finally, on June 15th at 5:15, we will be adopting the fiscal year '23 budget. Our next slide here, we just would like to thank our budget team and city staff that have worked hard to prepare this fiscal year '23 budget. Just going down the list, we have City Manager Christian Clegg, our Finance Director Randy McKeegan, HR Director Kristi Tenner, myself as a budget officer, our Assistant Finance Director Tara Lovelace, our Assistant Public Works Director Stuart Patterson, Assistant Police Chief Brent Stranton, Deputy Fire Chief Kevin Albertson, and our three assistants to the City Manager, Brianna Carrier, Anthony Valdez, and Kevin Schulzen. And again, of course, our department heads, business managers, budget managers, and all city staff that contributed to preparing the fiscal year '23 budget. At this time, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Clegg, and all those, Mr. McKeegan, staff. Thank you so much for the presentation tonight. I am going to restrain myself from jumping into the weeds, because I know we have a series of workshops in the coming weeks to get into it. I'd just make a few comments tonight. First of all, the good news is the voters approved PSVS in 2018, and now we have opportunities to get at some of the most pressing issues facing our community and also work towards a better future over the next 10, 15, 20 years, really building a better Bakersfield over time. And so that's the good news. The bad news is, we didn't pass a sales tax measure 10 years prior, because there's a lot of catch-up to do. There's a lot of things that we have to do that, that are really important for our city, a lot of priority-one issues, but we're going to get on it. In fact, you know, one of the questions I'll have when we get into the public safety piece is, how are we really utilizing those security contracts and how are we thinking about service performance? So I'd like some feedback from staff when we get there. Regarding capital projects, when we hear from public works, I'm really interested in, in understanding what the strategy is to really accelerate some of our work. You know, over the last year, we have approved a lot of CIP projects and funded those, but there's a lot of projects on the list. And so how are we going to, as we look at this next fiscal year, how are we really going to accelerate the work? So I'm really interested in that. And then also, this MLK park reimagining is a really compelling piece. My colleague, Councilman Arias, has led the effort, and on Friday, I will be responsible for this, for this area as well. So I'd like us to also look at really a concrete funding plan of how we're going to fund the reimagining of not only the park, but also the community center. And I would propose that we access the CDBG Section 108 loans in order to do that. And so whether we get at that during this budget process or at the CDBG hearings next fiscal year, I'd like us to begin working on that more concretely. So again, great job to staff. Thank you so much for all of your efforts, and I'm looking forward to this, this next fiscal year.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Any other requests to speak? Is it not working? Councilmember Parley.
Thank you, Mayor. On council contingency, we talked about this a little bit, Christian, $300,000. I wonder if there was a way to maybe divvy up that money a little bit to council members or everybody on the dais. There's some gray areas that I know that have happened in Ward 7, and sometimes there's a need to fill that gap, and it may not necessarily fall in our city department, but there's still a need. I was just doing some quick math up here, and if we each got 30,000, it would still leave 60,000 left in contingency. And I remember one year we were up here, and I think it went to 45 or 50 total for the whole council. So I don't know what my colleagues think, but if there's a way you could potentially bring that back to us and break it down and give us some, some ideas on it. Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, through the chair and to the referring council member, I've, I have seen this work in, in other jurisdictions. I think there's pros and cons. I think that it does serve a purpose. I, I think it's a significant enough policy choice that I would kind of look for a little bit of consensus from the dais if there are others who, you know, maybe are unsure about that, or others that want to move forward on that. I think we could definitely bring it back for full council consideration or, or a committee referral, but staff can absolutely do analysis on kind of what that would look like and maybe some parameters under which we could recommend a program for that expenditure, but just kind of scanning to make sure we, we move forward that way.
Well, how about you bring it back with an analysis and give the council an opportunity to discuss it?
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parley. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. On everything that was presented, I thought it was well done and want to tip my hat off to you, Mario and Randy and the entire team for putting together a solid budget. What I'm actually going to focus on is things that I didn't see in the budget. So want to open up a discussion really quick to make sure that when it comes to TCC and the transformative climate communities grant, how are we thinking about covering the matching funds that are going to be required? Do we feel like in, in, I know that there are a couple of different buckets that we've created and established that we're going to be putting some funds toward that, but do we feel confident that, you know, we have a plan to match those funds in this upcoming application process?
Thank you, Councilmember. I would say yes, and let me give a little more context to that. The nature of TCC is that it does cover several subject areas that, that are overlapping with our budget proposals and budget allocations. I think our grant match fund, in particular, our Bicycle and Pedestrian Match Fund, the way that the match works for TCC is that it could be, you know, any project that is consistent with those, with the goals of TCC and the projects that we're pursuing within that TCC area. And so because we're spending, you know, significant dollars on park revitalizations and community revitalization and infrastructure, those will all be eligible as match. Also, some of our federal funding, the state is fortunately on this one, a little bit liberal in defining what the match can be. So federal funds that, that come through on grants or entitlements can be leveraged for TCC match. Also, our understanding to date is that ARPA funds can be leveraged as TCC match. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars that we're putting away can be leveraged as TCC match. So we have, we have significant investments in the TCC area that I'm confident will put us at a great match position.
Excellent. Thank you for that. The other one, too, is as important as I think it is that we continue to staff up to make sure that we have appropriate staffing resources to get at some of the challenges that we're facing in the community. I think it's also important that we adequately ensure that we're well-prepared to compensate those who are already on staff. So I know that we are undergoing a classification and compensation study right now with HR. So I know we've made initial allocations. What's the plan and strategy to make sure that when that comes back, we're ready to go and we're not choosing, you know, which departments are going to get that adequate adjustment and which ones are not?
Thank you, Councilmember. Two thoughts around that. One, just to, to the last segment, I will be a strong proponent of ensuring that we address this equitably across all employee groups and, and employee classifications, and that we let the market data guide us on that. And that in some instances, we may have employees that are farther out of market than other employees, and we can't tackle that all at once, but that we can phase it in, but everybody, I think, should, you know, anybody who's under a certain percentage of market should see that adjustment, and then maybe in a year two or a three, you could make further adjustments for those that are farther out of market. And so I, I wouldn't, I want to put us in a position where we, we have some haves and have-nots amongst employees or employee groups. Secondly, though, just to how are we planning ahead for that? We did set aside at mid-year some market compensation set-asides. We actually didn't highlight this in fiscal solvency, but we actually are recommending another $2 million of market compensation set-asides in the budget. I, I want to be careful and strategic, but we've actually, you know, even in the general fund, budgeted anticipating for negotiations with our labor partners that are going to have contracts expiring as of June of this year, and so that's included in the general fund budget. Some assumptions to, to be able to address that process, as well as these market compensation set-asides, and one-time money is just for class and comp. So will it, I'm not saying, you know, can I guarantee today that class and comp won't be more than the set-asides we've made? I, I can't today. I think we need to be prepared for that conversation when it comes, but I think we've set aside notable funds, and those are going to be ongoing decisions, and so we can't handle it all at one time anyway. And so I think it'll be a, a good policy discussion for council for how we take that data. And I would think it's, it's a safe assumption that we're going to have to phase into some of that, but having that objective data and then having some set-asides to get at some bigger chunks early on, and then phase in that ongoing, you know, basically rebalancing of our compensation and budgeting. But feel, feel confident that we're in a, in as good a position as we can be for that. And then, you know, we'll, we'll have some good discussions as we get that data back.
Great. And so what's the total that we've, if this budget were to be passed, what is the total set-aside?
I believe it's $6 million, Randy. Is that right? Yes. $6 million of one-time set-aside, and that's just for class and comp. It's not for our pending negotiations.
Okay, great. And so the expectation is that once we do that data analysis, we get that feedback back from the consultant that, not to say that it'll get to $6 million, but as much as we see fit, some of that will move into the ongoing costs, both through the general fund and also through PSVS. Is that right?
That is my assumption, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Any other requests to speak? Seeing none? Councilmember Parley.
Motion received and filed.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few referrals tonight, so please bear with me. Number one, I'm really excited about the new rapid response team for Kern River Parkway. I understand there was an incident recently with a bicyclist on the parkway, and this sort of raises a safety concern even still. And so I wanted to ask staff to provide some analysis for potential use of flock cameras on the bike path in existing, within the existing infrastructure. So for example, signage, maybe other traffic poles or light poles that we can affix these flock cameras, just to provide some additional enhanced security for, for the bike path. I have a few referrals tonight regarding downtown. We've done a number of efforts to revitalize downtown over the past few years, and I'm looking forward to the future of the, of the downtown core. And so I'm going to make a few referrals, about four referrals, referrals to the Planning and Development Committee tonight. Number one is for staff to bring to the Planning and Development Committee in ordinance that will revise the floor area ratio limit with the possible removal for downtown development. Number two, and it's a program to provide options in terms of payment of impact fees for infill development projects. Number three, Councilman Freeman actually has brought up the idea of developing a downtown master plan, and so I'd like us to begin exploring what it would take to, to actually go through that process. And number four, we have a number of restaurants within the area who would like to provide outdoor dining options for their patrons, and so I'd like us to explore expediting that encroachment permit process for the use of outdoor dining. And then two other downtown-related referrals tonight. One is the, is for staff to begin analysis for the, the creation of a parking enterprise fund for the downtown area and the downtown parking structure, and the potential building of a new structure on East Chester at some later date. And then also analysis on a potential economic development ordinance that could bring back some of the functions that we once had with RDA. So I appreciate all of the work there. I know it's a lot, but I'm hoping that this will get the ball rolling. And then finally, tonight, you know, I think we've said, we've talked about in the past, our, our city should be very proud of a lot of the work we've done over the past few years to address homelessness in our community. The BLNC has had major success. It is completely full. There's over 100, and I can't keep up with the number, but it's hovering around 130 individuals who are permanently housed now as a result. individuals who are permanently housed now as a result of the efforts there at the Brunswick Navigation Center. And we are making significant gains. But it's clear to all of us that more must be done, that we have to address the homelessness crisis now for those individuals who remain on the streets. And it's also clear that the status quo simply is unacceptable, that there are many individuals who are living with mental health or substance abuse challenges that really need life-saving care and who just remain withering away on the streets. And I want to commend the mayor because she has joined the big city mayors in advocating for the CARE Court. And this CARE Court would allow people like family members or agencies or public safety first responders to refer individuals with severe mental illness or substance abuse disorders who are often homeless to be both prioritized and required to participate in treatment through a court-ordered care plan. This is actually in the state legislature right now, and if passed, would give us tools locally to address those harder-to-reach individuals. From my conversations with business owners and from residents of War II and throughout the city, this can't come soon enough. And so I'm hoping that our council would join our mayor in supporting the CARE Court. And I'm going to ask staff that they will draft a resolution to bring back at the next council meeting so that we can consider adoption of that resolution in support of CARE Court. But I do want to say just publicly, a huge thank you to Mayor Go for providing leadership, not only at our local level, but at the state level, and speaking on behalf of the most vulnerable in our community and really pursuing workable, viable options and solutions to address this crisis. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I'll be meeting at 8:00 if we get out of here with the big city mayors and Senator Egman, who is actually bringing that forward. And so we'll have more specifics. And as the council member said, we are at that point now where we have done so much for homelessness in our community, but we really have to get at the root issues. Thank you very much, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gray.
Well, I would agree with all that my colleague has spoken. And again, thank you, Mayor, for what you're doing to try to mitigate the challenge. I wanted to speak on, we have put together, Vice Mayor Weir was the one who wanted to put together an ad hoc committee on homelessness, and we have been meeting since February of this year to try to reduce the effects of the homeless population that it is having on the general population, our businesses, our residents, and so forth, and at the same time, find compassionate solutions for the increasing population of our homeless in our community. So I'm just going to kind of give you a report of our last meeting. And a lot of times, my constituents say, what are you doing about the homeless situation? Because they're not visually seeing any changes out on the street. So I thought it was a good idea to be able to report to you what our committee is working on, who's involved in it, and kind of give some hope. But I think this CARE Court is certainly one of the most important things that we can do for those most vulnerable. So I would definitely be in support of that resolution. So thank you for bringing that forth. So homelessness is one of the biggest challenges in our community because it's extremely complicated. There are no quick answers. Substance abuse, mental health, lack of affordable housing, and state laws that frankly tie our hands make it very difficult to find quick solutions for our community members. But within the guidelines given, we are working extremely hard to use every resource possible and every innovative idea possible to meet the challenge. Prop 47 has had a huge impact on the homeless population. It allows for early release of misdemeanor crimes and promotes a revolving door for repeat offenders. And until reform of this bill can take place, it will continue to play a big role in our homeless population. So what are the numbers according to our latest pit count and what are we doing to find solutions? The count was just released last week, finding that we have 1,361 homeless individuals, including 161 children. That number really bothered me. Of that number, 728, including six children, are presently unsheltered. Of the 728, approximately 50% of those are refusing shelter for one reason or another. And a lot of it goes back to their addiction. And not all, but a lot of it. Flood Ministries has started keeping track of that data as of lately to get a better understanding of that population. The city has, so what have we done? What are we doing? What have we done? So just some things so the public knows that we aren't sitting on our hands at the city and saying, oh, we're never going to conquer this. We are definitely working towards it. The city has created 500 shelter beds in the past two years. Our goal is to reach 600 shelter beds by 2025. And when speaking with our mayor tonight, she felt like we were way ahead of that target. So hopefully, yes. Last year, we placed 260 individuals or families in permanent housing and connected dozens out of the region with families where we were able to reconnect. The city has created one MET team that consists of one officer coupled with a mental health professional to provide crisis intervention voluntarily and involuntarily, assessment for psychiatric hospitalization on the streets. But we could actually use three teams. The problem, again, is staffing. And if you talk to any business, you talk to, you know, here at the city, trying to staff all these positions that we need is where the real challenge is. So we're dealing with that staffing issues at every level. We have added, as you've heard tonight several times, one more code enforcement response team. Now we have a total of four. But the three teams in 2021, this floored me when I heard this, those three teams and City Manager Christian, how many are on one of those teams? Is it four people per team?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. It's six individuals per team.
Six individuals, okay. So six times three is 18, have cleaned up 4,690 encampments in one year, 4,690, and have picked up 5 million pounds of trash. That just was amazing to me. So as a committee member, as a member of this committee, I felt that it was important to let the public know some of the things that we are focused on as a city, but this report is not in total of what the city is doing. I want to encourage the public that we are taking proactive approach to the challenge, but there's much more work to do. And as, as Mayor was saying, she is having these meetings with big city mayors continually, what are other cities doing to meet the challenges? And so I really appreciate the time that she's put into it. So our council is committed to finding more and more solutions to mitigate the challenge before us, and I appreciate the work that everybody's doing. We can conquer this. We can find the help for those people. I was out with the All-American Cleanup Saturday and seeing people there that are just, their mental health, they're gone, but yet they're out on the streets in the heat, they don't have the proper food, you know, healthcare and so forth. So we've got to find compassionate solutions. So with that, on another note, I just want to, well, I knew I shouldn't have tried this. I want to wish everybody a happy Mother's Day this weekend. And I, sorry. I would like to honor my wonderful mother, Peggy Killingsworth, who lived to the age of 96. And if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be here tonight. So thank you, Mom, for what you did for me. Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we all know fireworks enforcement is important and it's continued to be a problem within the city. My committee, Legend Lit, has met with it several times. We came up with administrative process to help with enforcement efforts. But yet, on the flip side of that, you still have the legal fireworks, and a lot of our nonprofit organizations really rely on that revenue to make ends meet throughout the year. What we're really talking is about illegal fireworks. And those fireworks continue to be a problem. But the enforcement of that, especially in non-Fourth of July period times, can be challenging. And this is where I think staff needs to look at, maybe another one or two arson investigators. I know that as complaints come in now, if nobody's on, it may fall to a station to respond. And you're talking about public safety, but they're non-sworn, showing up on an engine. They're already impacted already. We already know that we're probably behind in our station protocol. And when they're already fielding, you know, other, a host of other calls, to throw that into the mix might be a little too much. So maybe if we look at just a better staffing plan so we're not so impacted in that area, at least with the local stations. Next item. Today I got an email from the city department, and naturally, I clicked on it, couldn't open the link, and referred the city clerk to see if they could open it. And my response back, that city department or city email was compromised, and it was probably a phishing thing that had happened. And then another email went out as a warning to the city and council members that if you have a problem, contact IT. But council members don't have an email. We just have our personal emails, and we don't have an IT department because we're really not, you know, part of the city, per se, or within that family of emails. So I'd like staff to look at if a council member so desires that an email is provided to council. I referred this a couple of months ago, and it's, in my opinion, gotten worse. And it's on Caltrans, Caltrans areas for graffiti, primarily in our corridors, 99, 58. Graffiti is atrocious. I talked last time I referred this of paint, the various colors of gray and tan that they use, and even on tan walls, are using various colors of gray now, too. It doesn't show that they care anything about our city. They just did a clear cut of multiple trees along the 99, trees that have been there. And I remember coming to Bakersfield 40 years ago, and they weren't a problem then, but they clear-cut them. And my response when I saw that happen with staff was, well, now it's just going to lend for more graffiti. And sure enough, those areas that had trees now have graffitis, graffiti up 10, 12, 15 feet up on some areas of the wall that were screened by trees before. I asked that staff reach out to our local state electeds as a group. And I don't know if that's happened or not. Can you answer that?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. We wanted to give one more try with our Caltrans folks here locally. We haven't had a lot of success. We have not approached our delegation to advocate at the state level. But given our recent attempt to address it, sort of at the local regional level, not meeting with the results that we want, I think your feedback is aligned and warranted with where we want to go. And the next step is to advocate through our legislative delegation.
Thank you, Christian. And we get 60, what I heard, 60 million cars a year potentially traversing up and down the 99. There's areas in Southern California that are pretty rough, and as long as you stay on the freeway, it looks pretty good. Well, we have the opposite effect here in Bakersfield. You're on the freeway, it looks horrible. You get off into the city, and it's pretty good. But a lot of people don't want to do that because of their perception of Bakersfield is what they see on our roadways that we don't necessarily have control of. And I think it's high time that we reach out to that delegation. I just don't see the, and I'm going to say malfeasance, of Caltrans through our area in other state areas. And I know they have a host of, you know, reasons or excuses or staffing or whatever, but, you know, I don't see it in other areas of the state. And I think that whatever pressure we can bring to bear, no matter where that pressure or pressure points come from, I think we should do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up on the comments by Councilman Parlier, I thought I'd heard once that Caltrans was willing to give us the money that they use for cleanup and graffiti and stuff, and we could do it ourselves. I mean, I, as we're looking into this, I would say, you know, I'd rather be in control of my own destiny if, you know, they'd be willing to give us the money and take it and run with it.
Councilmember Smith, the mayor of Fresno has told me that Fresno has taken over
That's what I thought.
...doing the Caltrans cleanup. They're paying, but yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Smith. There are examples where cities have taken that over. I think Caltrans is willing. I think we can do some analysis on it. My, my, a quick assumption is that it'll cost us more than we'll get from them, but if we want to control our fate and want to make that investment as a policy choice to have things, you know, look differently, there's a lot of wisdom to that. I think we just, you know, may, we'll probably try and have those conversations sooner than later in the event that we may want to just, you know, bump up a few dollars in the upcoming budget adoption to make sure we've got the resources to get at that.
It's just the long term. I mean, we've done it in the past, and we get on them, and they clean it up, and, you know, then it rotates back. And, you know, I think the long-term solution would be we control it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, going to lend my support as well for those ideas and engaging with Caltrans. But I also want to add that part of the responsibility is actually properly placed on some of the contractors who are doing that work, ensuring that, you know, they're following through with making sure that they're sweeping up all the excess debris that's on the freeways, making sure that, you know, when they are creating detour routes, that the equipment that they used is also not full of graffiti. I think right now, as we look along Freeway 99, that there's a lot of that right now. And so I want to make sure that we're doing what we can to ensure that, you know, they're held accountable for what's in that contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Anyone else? I just wanted to clarify one point on the pit count. That is a county-wide count. So we just want to make sure that people realize that. I've been asked by staff to share a new initiative, Size Up Bakersfield launch. The city of Bakersfield is providing entrepreneurs with an innovative new free service through a website called Size Up Bakersfield, which will help businesses better prepare through improved planning and marketing. Entrepreneurs can use the free online platform to estimate viability of their future or current businesses and test assumptions of their business plan. The city economics and economic and community development department, Paul Saldana's department, will host a demo online on Thursday, May 5th at 1:00 PM. So you can register online. This is a very special week. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. And last night, the Kern County Superintendent of Schools held a celebration. We've recognized so many outstanding teachers. I want to thank those who have invested in my life, and I'm sure that the rest of you do, too. So teachers, thank you so much for your investment. Thank you for all that you do to make a difference in our current and long-term future. So with that, we stand adjourned at 7:57.